I'm going to take a quick picture because we have some amazing folks out there.
I can't find all of them, though. Some of them are hard to find.
All right, we're going to begin today's hearing, public hearing for October 31st, 2023. Happy Halloween. Can we please have roll call?
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Pinter?
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Here.
Commissioner Baca?
Commissioner Tedesco?
And I ask that everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda today?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second?
And we have a second. Voting on that. That passes. Moving on to awards and presentations. October is officially Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We're here to remind each other that we're responsible for promoting safety, supporting survivors, and saying no more to domestic violence in our communities. It's all about coming together, shining a light on this critical issue, and working towards a world where everyone can feel safe in their homes. This month, we're all about creating a society that focuses on respect, empathy, and equality. And together, we're striving for a safer, more compassionate community. At this time, I would ask Commissioner Henry, please read the proclamation.
Thank you, Chair. Whereas one in three women will experience domestic violence during her lifetime, one in every four women will experience sexual assault in her lifetime, and one in seven men have been the victims of severe physical violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime. And whereas approximately 15.5 million children are exposed to domestic violence every year, and seven million children live in families in which severe intimate partner violence occurred. And whereas domestic violence incidents increased by 8.1% nationwide during the COVID pandemic. And whereas in 2021, 45 individuals were murdered in Colorado by an intimate partner, and there were an additional 14 collateral fatalities during domestic violence incidents, including four children. And whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income level. And whereas the crimes of domestic and sexual violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas victims of violence should have access to medical and legal services, counseling, emergencies, and transitional housing, and other supportive services, so that they can safely escape the cycle of abuse. And whereas we encourage domestic and sexual violence victims and their families to seek assistance from appropriate victim service organizations, such as the dedicated systems and nonprofit-based victim advocates in Adams County. And whereas the 17 Judicial District Domestic Violence High-Risk Team, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide are committed to increase public awareness of domestic and sexual violence and its prevalence, and is eliminating it through prevention and education. And whereas important partnerships have been formed among criminal and juvenile justice agencies, health care providers, allied professionals, and victim services to assist victims of domestic and sexual violence and their families. And whereas Adams County, Colorado has a moral obligation to work to prevent domestic violence addressed to brutal destructive effects and make ending domestic violence a local priority. Now whereas be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado proclaim October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Signed Eva J. Henry, Charles Chaz Tedesco, Emma Pinter, Steve Odoricio, and Lynn Baca. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Henry. And before we go to other commissioners speak, we have some guests here that I would like to invite up. Do we have Brian Mason from the DA's office? We have Police Chief Domenico from Brighton, and the Vista's Program Director Sylvia Ramos-Gamboa. Please come on down. Or Sylvia's designee. Come on down. Please share your names and anything else you want to share.
Morning, Commissioners. It's sobering for me every year to stand before you on the day that we recognize Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Last week, the Colorado Domestic Violence Fatality Review Board released its annual report, and we had 94 domestic violence fatalities in Colorado last year, and 17 were in Adams County. That's a very sobering and frustrating number to me. And only by working together can we actually address this problem. I will say that we have some reason for hope, and I think that's worthy of recognition today, too. When I took office, I said I didn't want to just do what we've always done on domestic violence. We're not. In 2021, the DA's office, along with Thornton PD, Adams County Department of Human Services, Family Tree, Servicios de la Raza, Project Safeguard, Ralston House, Adams 12 Schools, and probation, joined forces and created the 17th Judicial District's Domestic Violence High-Risk Team. Through the support of this commission, DVHRT received a $2 million grant that expanded our work. We could expand it further in 2022, and we're joined by Brumfield PD, Safe House Progressive Alliance, Brumfield DHS, and Brighton Housing. In 2023, forgive me, I want to just get on the record, everybody who's part of this team. In 2023, we expanded further, an increase from 11 community partners to 22 community partners. Reaching Hope joined the team, Asian Pacific Development Center, Community Language Cooperative, Adams County Animal Shelter. Additional law enforcement agencies have joined just this year in 2022 and 2023, including the Commerce City Police Department, the Westminster Police Department, and as of this week, the Adams County Sheriff's Office. Prior to joining the team, officers from each of these law enforcement agencies are trained by my office and our team and provided with comprehensive training that includes DV Dynamics, best practices for DV investigations, strangulation, and stalking. It's a huge, huge problem which continues to pervade our community, and yet we really are doing something about it. I appreciate the commitment of this board and of our partners in the community. Of course, one of our goals that this board hears me say multiple times and that I know the board is partnering with us on is in building someday of a family justice center. We need to have a space in Adams County, in the 17th Judicial District, where victims can go and get all of the services that they need so that we can prevent them from being on an autopsy table, so we can prevent them from dying and being another statistic in this annual report. So although it's hard for me to stand up every year and talk about this issue, we have to get the word out about what we're doing and make sure that victims can get there.
Thank you, DA Mason. Chief?
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I would just like to echo a couple of the things that District Attorney Mason talked about. There is some really outstanding work occurring in Adams County when it comes to responding to domestic violence. We have an outstanding DV High-Risk Team that is doing great work. We have outstanding victim service organizations throughout the judicial district that are stepping up every day to help victims. But we are here today to talk about domestic violence, and it really does remain a pervasive issue locally and nationally. Whether any of us are aware of it or not, it has most certainly had an impact on a close friend or family member of all of us. We heard some statistics earlier. More than 10 million people annually suffer abuse at the hands of an intimate partner. One in three women and one in four men have been victims of domestic violence. The impacts of domestic violence are far-reaching and impact all segments of society, regardless of age, gender, race, religion, socioeconomic status, nationality, and many others. Victims face physical injury, psychological trauma, and far too often, the consequences of domestic violence are fatal. While no one is more affected than the victims, DV impacts everyone who is exposed, and the negative, long-lasting effects on children who witness these acts are well documented. Raising awareness about the realities of domestic violence is an important step in combating this issue. In addition to raising awareness, October is a time to acknowledge all victims and survivors of domestic violence. We need everyone to get involved to eliminate gender-based violence. The theme of this year's Domestic Awareness Month is engaging men and boys, who have not historically played a really prominent role in combating this issue. But it is time for them to engage them more effectively in this fight with the long-term goal of ending domestic violence. Thank you again for this opportunity. Thank you for your continued efforts in honoring victims and survivors and raising much-needed awareness on this issue. So thank you all very much. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today.
Thanks, Chief.
Hello, good morning. My name is Jose Pereira, and I'm a victim advocate at Servicios de la Raza. I'm also part of the Domestic Violence High-Risk Task Force. My director, Sylvia Ramos-Gamboa, was unable to attend today due to illness. So you guys get me. So domestic violence is something that does not discriminate. It does not matter your gender, your race, your sexual orientation, your age, or your socioeconomic status. It does not exclude anyone, and because of that, anyone can face violence. As service providers, whether it's advocates, therapists, officers, or as people from the DA's office, we see this daily. Like was said before, statistics show that domestic violence affects over 10 million people in the United States each year. However, we're only taking the information and the data for the reported cases. We're not looking at the unreported victims. It's important to recognize all the work done presently and before us. However, we must continue to work in unity to help victims rebuild and flourish. Together, we can help victims not only rebuild their future, but rebuild the now. Thank you all for everything that you do.
Thank you. At this moment, I would also like to ask all those folks that you brought with you today, whether it's first responders, police, officers, victims advocates, caseworkers, counselors, and others who work in this area. Will you please stand? Thank you for all of your tireless work on the nights and weekends and holidays and all the times that these challenges happen. Commissioner Pinter?
Yeah, thank you so much for the work that you're doing, and thank you for inviting such a broad spectrum of partners. This is something that's really important to our community as you have documented with the stories you've shared and with the statistics and with Commissioner Henry's proclamation as well. This is really important to have as a service in our community. Domestic violence has impacted my family, and I know it has impacted many of the folks in this room just based on statistics alone. I really also appreciate that it's language-inclusive, that it's queer-affirming, that it's an expansive definition of who can come in and receive services. And I also deeply appreciate the wraparound services that are provided because a police report is incredibly helpful, but often that doesn't solve the trauma and doesn't halt the trauma from continuing. And so having the wraparound services from our human services team, from our nonprofit partners, helps an individual and/or their children become safe. And I know that's a really collaborative effort to be welcoming and affirming to anyone who's coming in and with an incredible sensitivity to what they are experiencing that brought them to the high-risk team. And so thank you to everyone who puts this cross-functional team together. Really important that we're doing it together and across so many disciplines, and I'm really grateful for your work.
Commissioner Henry?
I'm going to actually share a story that I've only shared once, and that was in an FOP meeting to let them know how much I appreciated them. When I was about nine years old, I was sleeping on the sofa, and I remember being woken up by my brother grabbing me, hearing voices shouting, and my brother hiding me in a closet. All I knew is I heard a lot of noises, a lot of scary noises. My brother had to run two blocks down to a payphone because back then we couldn't afford a phone in our own house to call the police. I remember the police showing up. I could hear them. And I was too afraid to come out of the closet to make sure I was safe until a police officer actually looked in the closet and found me. I remember how safe I felt when he wrapped his arms around me, picked me up, told me I was going to be okay. My father was arrested and put to jail, but in the 70s, there wasn't anything that really saved you. There were no laws that protected women and children. And my father was returned home the next day. So I thank all the people here that are part of those services. I share my story to strengthen those that are out there that are in fear that we now have laws and we now have services that protect women. Not enough, definitely not enough. And it goes both with women and men that need to be protected. So I thank those of you who are here for doing what you do. I know it's hard. I know those stories are heartbreaking. And I know it's heartbreaking when you see them go back to the violence that they had left. But please don't give up, and please do what you continue to do. And thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you, Commissioner Henry. Thank you all. Is there anything else? Thank you so very much. All right. And again, thank you to everyone who's contributed. At this moment in our meetings, we also open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on any matter? First of all, I ask, has anyone signed up to speak?
Chair, I see some of the public leaving. I think it's staff that are maybe a box of crayons. So if the box of crayons could come back?
Okay. In the meantime, yes.
If there's no one signed up?
Okay. Has anyone signed up to speak?
There is not.
Okay. And is there anyone in... Okay, so we will take a moment, divert from the agenda to acknowledge that we have... Would you guys like to come up? So you're on camera? We'd love to see you guys. Come on!
You put that much work into a costume when you're going to sneak out the back?
You're all dressed up. You can't tell you're bashful.
We have a very colorful team coming down. And... We have a very colorful team coming down and watch your watch your steps, yes. Oh my goodness. Look at this. Can you can you tell us, who do we have here? There's always like a couple that are missing, right? You'll find them in the couch. Well, thank you very much for bringing joy to us. I see a few of them are sharper than the others. Those tend to be the ignored crayons that are usually the sharp ones, right? Alrighty, uh, thank you all very much. Okay, at this time, is there anyone in the audience that did not sign up that would still like to speak though on any matter? I don't see anyone coming down. Um, all right. Then at this moment, we're going to go on to consent calendar. We have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead. Okay. I think I hit the button before you, so yes. We're voting. We approve the consent calendar.
Okay, it's that is approved. Moving on to new business county manager.
Good morning, Commissioners. I brought my Halloween voice today. I assure you, I don't feel the way I sound. It's just the season we're in. We have one item for you this morning. It's a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Horrock Engineers Incorporated in the amount of five hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars for professional acquisition services for the Goat Hill Irving-to-Hooker Right-Away Project, RFP, twenty twenty-three point two four four, and Marissa Hilgi will present.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Marissa Hilgi, Right-Away Agent for Public Works. The purpose of the Goat Hill Irving-to-Hooker Right-Away Acquisition Services Project is to prepare right-of-way plans, legal description documents, provide real property acquisition services, land surveying, staking, and land title services needed for the project. A formal request for proposals was solicited through BidNet. The request was opened on August fourth, twenty twenty-three, and three responsive proposals were submitted. After review of the proposals for each firm, the Public Works Department determined that Horrocks Engineers, Inc. was the best qualified consultant. Public Works recommends that the Goat Hill Irving-to-Hooker Right-Away Acquisition Services Project be awarded to Horrocks Engineers, Inc. as the best qualified consultant in the amount of five hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifteen. Thank you.
Hey, do we have any questions? If not, do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. We will vote. Thank you very much. That was easy. All right. County manager, that's it for you, right? County attorney?
Good morning, Commissioners. I do have an executive session, but if you will indulge me, I want to take a moment to thank the staff involved in the Board of Equalization process. You today just approved the final findings of three thousand and two hundred hearings that were conducted during a six-week period. We have one person in the county attorney's office who is responsible for that process and that's Christina Posuelos. She could not be here today. She has a sick child, but I want to recognize the incredible work of Christina, day and night, sixteen, seventeen-hour days, to get that done. We have never been able to find an IT solution for this process. It is a ton of manual work and manual data entry and she does a phenomenal job. Also, thank you to Meredith Van Horn, the attorney who oversees the process, and the assessor's office. Every one of those hearings involves an independent hearing officer, an appraiser from the assessor's office, and of course, our citizens who are appealing their taxes. This year had more than three times our normal volume of hearings and it was just an incredibly difficult process to get done in such a short period of time. And I just want to thank everyone, including our whole office in the fifth floor, that saw a tremendous volume of traffic lines out the door at the county attorney's office this year for people coming to appeal. And I really congratulate Adams County for doing it right and taking the time to hear every one of those hearings. Some of our peers gave up, given the incredible volume, and just denied applications and every one of our citizens were granted a hearing. So I just want to take a minute to thank everybody involved in that process. It was a huge undertaking and they all did a great job.
Thank you.
All right, so down to business. I would ask that we go into executive session today pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four six, four oh two, four B for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding a patent discussion.
All right. Do we have a we have a motion in a second and we'll vote? Okay, and that passes unanimously. We'll do that executive session later today. We're going to take a five-minute recess to allow staff to set up for the land use We're going to reconvene the public hearing. We're now moving into the land use portion of the public hearing. We now hand it over to the staff.
Good morning. My name is David Dobasky. I'm a planner with the Community and Economic Development and I'm here to present to you the continuance case of Portillo Watkins Large Vehicle Parking, RCU two thousand twenty-two Okay, all right. So to remind you, this case was heard on October tenth and the board requested a continuance for staff to work with the applicant. And the the request was to park vehicles weighing in excess of seven thousand pounds on a residentially-used property within the A-one zone district. And this was in response to a parking violation of commercial trucks. A little reminder of where we are looking. We are looking in between East one fifty-second Avenue, East one forty-fourth Avenue, and in Bowden Road along Watkins Road. A closer look at the site, you'll see the surrounding, you'll see there are mostly agriculture and preservation uses. And the current zoning of this of this site is A-one, which is intended to provide a rural single-family dwelling district and is intended to promote a rural living experience with limited farm uses. The future land use designation of this site is residential low, which is most appropriate for suburban and exurban areas in that Adams County, primarily consisting of single-family housing. So the criteria for conditional use permit are, one, that the use is permitted in the zone district; two, the request is consistent with the performance standards; three, the request complies with the with the performance state with the requirements of the standards and regulations; four, the request is harmonious and compatible; the request has the applicant has addressed all off-site impacts; the site is suitable for the use; there is a convenient and functional layout of the site plan; and there are adequate services. And so the applicant has submitted and submitted this landscape parking plan and worked with staff from the in between the last this hearing and the last hearing, the applicant has worked with us to not only meet our landscaping and parking standards, but has done significant changes to it. Most notably, a concern that staff had about the parking plan was the size and the parking surface. And the applicant has adapted that to something that that staff has agreed to, and that would be an asphalt parking surface and the size would be significantly smaller than the original requested parking space. It would only be under two thousand square feet and that would be just enough for three oversized vehicles. And moreover, a concern that staff had was the issue of stormwater and vehicle effuge, effulents. And so we worked with the applicant and they are going to install stormwater mitigation measures and you can go a little bit closer and you can see that the blue blue-green light lines are the proposed rain gardens. And if we wanted to go more into specifics about what the stormwater mitigation techniques, I would ask those, I would ask that you speak to the applicant or the engineer. Oh. So to get a better idea of where we are looking, this is the front of the site and this and then looking across the street to the west, you can see a barn and then looking south and north look very agricultural in character. And then to the southeast, you can see the conservation easement that was stated before. So all in all, property owners and occupants were sent a request for comment and that went out one mile to one hundred and sixty-two, a nearby residence, five letters of indifference, one letter of support, and three letters of concern. These are the same concerns that we had a couple of weeks ago. The road's ability to support the weight of the vehicles. Applicant should have known better before buying the property. At the time of the request for comment, it was five cars for only one driver, but now it's only three. There were concerns about operating a business, to which the applicant has assured us that she is not operating a business at home. There was concern about the compatibility and the number of trucks. And one of the other things that the Commissioners had asked in between now and October tenth was a concrete letter of concrete letter of who was in support. And the applicant has provided a map of who has given their support and there there's a map and there's also letters that were originally presented with the original application, but because they were not part of the request for comment that we send out, it wasn't clear on our radar. And no referral agencies responded with concern. And as said before, here are, here is the map of all the neighbors who are supporting, who are in in support of this request. And all of these names are in the packet, plus this one, which was just given to me and this was this individual right here, and they're all in support of the request. Oh, this one, sorry. So in summary, after talking with the applicant, this this use is permitted in this zone district. It is consistent with the performance standards. It complies with the requirements of the standards and regulations. It is harmonious and compatible to the adjacent neighborhood and has addressed all off-site impacts. It is suitable for use and there is a convenient and functional layout of the site plan and there are adequate services. So staff is going going to So, staff is going to recommend approval of the proposed conditional use permit with eight findings of fact, six conditions precedent, five conditions, and three notes to the applicant. And this is very similar to what a planning commission recommended, although this time with staff, we are adding one additional conditions precedent than what planning commission agreed to. And we're going to recommend five years for an expiration date. And here are the findings of fact, and our conditions precedent. And what we have added since was that we need to clarify that the applicant needs to have an access permit. There needs to be an installation of the county-approved hard surface, and that the water quality best practices will be installed on or around the hard surface. Here are the recommended conditions. And actually, and thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, any questions for staff? Commissioner Pinter? No? Commissioner Andrew? Okay, let's hear from the applicant, please. Please come on down. Get your full name and your address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Brenda Portillo. I live at 14910 Watkins Road, Brighton, Colorado 80603, which is the address where the permit has been requested for. I spoke to the staff a week ago on Friday. We have agreed to all the different recommendations from the engineer present, as well as from the staff manager, David. And we, as shown on the map, we have developed a landscape that meets the requirements that they were asking for, and then, obviously, that we are going to do to mitigate any nuisance, any bothers that may be caused to any of the neighbors. And also, making sure we're taking into consideration, the plan is including a rain garden to lower water and any type of contamination to the water. So, we have, the plan shows trees. The engineer present said, you know, rain garden is a pretty good idea to install in these cases. So bushes and shrubs and trees that are native to the area. And we also will be, during construction, if approved, we are taking into consideration straw socks and silt fence just for sediment and erosion control. And again, we essentially just took every recommendation during that meeting, and we're going to implement it. We, as I stated before, we do care about our neighbors. We want to make sure, you know, we are all living as best as possible. You know, we live pretty close to each other, and I think we all moved to the outsides of the city because we want to be as peaceful as possibly can in our homes. And that's what we want to do. We want to just be good neighbors and continue to work, be able to park my husband's truck there in our property. We also spoke to all the neighbors that are directly adjacent to us, except for the one neighbor, Ryan Nuones. As I stated before, I'm not comfortable speaking to him in person, and I still don't feel comfortable speaking to him. I was hoping he would show up to one of these meetings, and he hasn't yet. But I do have two of my neighbors here supporting me today, Susan and David, who I really appreciate taking their time out of their busy days to come and support me in this. I don't know if you have any questions for me?
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Pinter, then I have one.
I don't have a question at this time, though I'm curious what my colleague's question is. I just want to say thank you. This is no small undertaking to find yourself in a land use hearing on your own, and I want to compliment you on your diligence and how hard you've worked to gather the support of your neighbors and explain to them what's happening, and the precautions you're taking to protect the water table and runoff, as well as the property itself. So, it's complicated, and you clearly have put a lot of effort into it.
Okay, I have a question for, there's a, this is a question for staff. I'm looking around the neighborhood to see where other businesses might be operating, and I look to the west, I see like Walters Mechanical directly to the west. I see a few others. I'm trying to, I'm genuinely concerned, as I stated in the last hearing, about agriculture now going to become the de facto outdoor storage for industrial. And so how do we avoid that situation from happening? And then, ma'am, if you want to sit down for now, and then they may direct a question to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. We do have a lot of these applications coming in for truck storage. You're going to see several. There was a violation issued just to the north of here that we have an application for that should be ready to come to public hearing shortly. With regard to code compliance, I would probably ask for the code compliance supervisor to come down and answer that question.
Actually, this is not a code compliance question. It's generally a planning question. How are we going to manage this beyond just compliance? I mean, if we're going to start the process of allowing every I-1 to become outdoor storage for large trucks, aren't we going to effectively change that? And require a permanent concrete for, this will forever, I think, change some of our low-intensity agriculture into becoming de facto industrial, outdoor storage.
Right, so that was one of staff's concerns originally. Originally, staff had recommended denial of this application. Both planning commission, well, planning commission had recommended approval, and then, we got a direction from the board the last time we were here to work with the applicant to come to a place where we could recommend approval. Staff does have those concerns as well. We see a lot of these applications. I think generally, in the Agricultural One Zone District, it doesn't fit. Usually, A1 lots are much smaller. This is a nine-acre parcel, I believe. And so it might make a little bit more sense out here on this property, which is why we changed our recommendation. But A1 parcels in other areas are generally two and a half acres. We don't find that to be appropriate. We are undertaking an analysis of where we're receiving these requests, the different types of zone districts, what might be appropriate, the different types of roadways that are around. We're also going to work with Planning Commission because I think that they have a lot of ideas on what this could look like as well. It is coming before us more frequently, so this is something we need to look into.
If this were, if the property owner wanted to build like a large, like barn or garage, auxiliary building, would this have been a violation? If they parked their truck inside?
No, there would not be a violation if the trucks were parked inside, as long as they were not operating a business.
Okay, those are some of my concerns. Commissioner, do you guys have any questions or comments? Commissioner Pinter?
Yeah, I see that the code compliance team, like, went into a huddle at that statement. Do you have anything to offer?
Come on down.
While she's making her way down, we have decisions to make at the land use case before us. Just sort of looking to our team, is this coming up for a more in-depth conversation at a study session? And I know that Commissioner Odorius said I-1 transitions to outdoor storage. I believe you meant A-1.
I was saying that I-1 becomes I-1.
Right.
Or, actually, outdoor storage would be I-2, I-3, but that's what I'm...
Are we having this as a study session? We can discuss it as opposed to like an individual case, but like the policy issue?
Yes, yes, and that's kind of what I was getting at, is that staff is now considering this internally. We're going to bring it to Planning Commission, and we can also bring it in front of the commissioners to have a larger policy conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, commissioners, thank you. My name is Gail Moon. I am the co-compliance supervisor, and I'm not sure 100% if I agree with the interpretation from the planning department. Regulation states parked, stored, or kept on the property, so whether it's indoors or outdoors could potentially be a violation, in our opinion.
It actually specifically says no interior or exterior parking of a vehicle over 7,000 pounds.
Okay, thank you very much. That conversation, we should have when we have that bigger-picture conversation. I am concerned about this. I'm worried about precedent. I'm not sure I can support this, but those are my comments. Do we have anyone from the audience that would like to speak?
I have a follow-up question.
Commissioner Pinter?
Sorry, this just raised an issue for me. As the original designation is the A1, and the weight limit is the issue. I'm just kind of curious, and maybe I don't understand the type of vehicles, but would there be a different finding if these were related to agriculture, such as a larger tractor or other vehicle used to maintain, you know, the other eight acres that could be presumably farmed?
We're verifying that in code language.
Thank you. I'm just trying to understand.
I think that's a fair request, to understand, is it based on weight or size as well, and the use, whether it goes on the roads?
So, the specific section of the code, which I'm sure Gail is about to say as well, it does not apply to, for example, RVs, personal non-commercial vehicles. So, I know we had talked about an Escalade the last meeting, or agricultural equipment used for agricultural purposes.
Okay, and the Escalade's kind of a funny question because the traditional Escalades are actually under 7,000, but the electric ones with the battery pack are over, which is kind of an interesting distinction that we're going to have to have fun chats about later in study sessions.
So, it's a personal vehicle, so it would be accepted under this definition? It's really trying to encompass those commercial trucks that we do see that sometimes people bring home to their properties.
We've had these issues in other parts of the county, as you have mentioned as well. And this is the resident's home. This is their family business. This is where they live. So, I see the recommended findings of fact on excessive traffic generation, noise, vibration, dust, glare, heat. You know, all the things around, lighting and off-site impacts that we would normally be concerned about with these large trucks. Because truck traffic, as I always say, is a nonpartisan issue that all my residents care about, for whatever reason. I mean, I think I know what reason, but, you know. Did you guys have any in-depth conversations about, because I don't see parameters in here like we would with a trucking business? So, I just see, pay attention to excessive traffic generation, noise, vibration, dust, glare, heat. Were there any other parameters that I'm missing around? Lighting? Or noise?
So, we did work with the applicant on concerns about lighting, and they didn't intend on having any. And that, in terms of idling, they didn't intend on making it longer than a few minutes. And this condition about the idling also addresses that.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. I know we were waiting to hear from the public as well.
All right, is there anyone from the public that would like to come down and speak? Please come on down. Please, good morning. Please state your full name and address for the record.
My name is David Stewart, and I live at 14941 Prairie Red Court. My property backs up to the Portillo's property. We share a fence line, so I'm probably their closest neighbor. You won't find any better neighbors than the Portillo's. Very generous, very kind, very good people. If I didn't see their semi over there, would never know they had one. I'm out on my property every morning. I'm retired, and I never hear the truck leave. I have seen it leave. Juan idles out of his driveway and idles up to Bromley, which is a main throughfare. And you hear noise off of Bromley all the time. I'm probably 20 acres in from Bromley, and I still hear the noise. I hear the noise from Colorado Clay's, which is directly behind us, which is a state-owned entity now, which you hear boom, 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 all day long, all weekend long. But I never hear his semi. I have a 40-foot diesel pusher motorhome at my property. I know it's different, I guess, for an RV, a personal-use vehicle, but it's the same vehicle. I mean, it's got the same diesel engine, the same everything, the big fuel tanks. And, I mean, there's really, the only difference is Juan uses that truck to make his living. And I think he should be able to bring it home and use it to make a living. I mean, that's why we moved to the country. I lived in North Glen for 30 years, right next to neighbors, and I wanted to get out of there and get out on some property where I could, you know, do basically what I want. And I think that's what the Portillo's wanted, was to get out, you know, on some property and have a good life. And I just hope you'll approve this permit for them, because they are good people.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Come on down.
I'm Susan Ruder-Skold. I live at 32651 East 149th Avenue, Brighton, 80603. We are at the end of the cul-de-sac road, right across from the Portillo family. Have no issue with them. They have been good neighbors. We're glad they've moved in over there. Friendlier than the last people that lived in that house. I don't worry about the truck. We do have, large trucks go up and down Watkins, sometimes every day. Somebody had an issue about the horses. It's rare to see people riding their horses on the side of the road. More than likely, it's ATVs, and it's the neighbor's kids, and a couple of people riding their motorbikes that are not legal to be on the street. And we have those go up and down. But they're not really affecting us. I've heard their truck, one morning, because I was up really early, and it took a while for me to figure out what I was hearing. I didn't hear it for very long. And I see him come in, I see him leave from time to time. We're glad they're over there. They're good neighbors. We hope you'll go ahead and let them stay there and do what you want them to do, and move on.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, I do have a question for the applicant. One of the questions that came up is, you originally wanted five trucks, and then you're asking for three, correct?
Correct.
Why do you even need three?
So, there are different types of trucks. Depending on the job that my husband does, he takes only one truck out. There's mainly one that he uses, and then there's a backup one that hooks up in case that one breaks down. And then there's a dump truck, and that's to do, it's like a smaller type of hauling dirt or rock, whatever it may be. So, that's why there's three. And initially, we had requested five because what I told you guys last time is, during the winter, he doesn't work. So, if it snows, he doesn't go out, or if it rains. And we were thinking of getting like, to shovel snow, like those trucks, to keep us busy. But we understand that that's a little excessive, and we are content if you allow us to just continue to park the three that he does use. We've been able to survive and stay in business with those three, so the additional two, you know, wouldn't be necessary. We haven't even purchased, so that's the explanation behind that.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Pinter?
Yeah, how did you know? Like, you just felt the energy?
I saw your finger come over.
Yeah, okay. Thank you so much. So, I think what we're wrestling with is we understand that you are a small business, and your husband is running a small business, owner occupied. He lives where he works, and this is a small business. We want success for you. I think he wants success. And unfortunately, with success, in this particular instance, it will mean more trucks. And unfortunately, with success, in this particular instance, it will mean more trucks and potentially more staff. And so I think what we're, what I'm hypersensitive to is maintaining this harmony with your neighbors and keeping it to the three trucks and not adding mechanical activity, not adding, you know, additional vehicles or workers coming. So you're running a large-scale commercial enterprise or even any additional staff on your residence. And so I think that's the tension that we're trying to parse through. And I'm just, I would like just to have a conversation with you about, is, these are your personal vehicles for your, you know, sole owner occupied business? You have three, no more than three. You live there and don't have any staff coming and going. And if you were to have the good fortune of growing, you would acquire a commercial property for that commercial use?
Absolutely. And we understand, like I said, it's very important for us to be at peace with our neighbors. And it would be very obvious if my husband and then, you know, taking out his one truck that he uses, I'm sure Susan and David and Justin and whoever else lives around us, it'd be very obvious if we were to hire people because you can, you can hear the truck coming out and coming back in, right? It's, it's obvious, they're not small trucks. So I think you would get a lot, a lot of complaints. And I, you know, I'm not going to lie to you, we obviously want to grow. We've tried it, we've been in business for 13 years. When we lived in Thornton, we tried it, it didn't work out. We tried it with one additional driver. Fortunately, it didn't work out and we are content with the life that we have, with my husband being the only driver. I work as well. And if we were to, in the future, grow and be more successful, I think it would only make sense, it'd be smart to rent a space that would be designated for that because then you won't, I, we wouldn't have to worry about any of this, right? It would be zoned appropriately, you know, we'd be able to get more trucks if, if we are successful in the future. But we are a single owner operator, like I stated before. We are just trying to be successful and not have to close down our business because we would not be able to afford to pay the mortgage and parking. That's the honest truth. And one of the comments from the neighbor that wrote in a letter said, you know, we should have known better, I absolutely agree, but it's done, right? I didn't do my due diligence in looking up the policies and the county regulations and this is what we have to go through now. So I'm just trying to do this or deal with this as best as possible. If the permit is not approved, and I know you have a lot of different things to consider, we do ask for time because we will have to sell and move and go back to the city and rent a yard like we were doing before. But I can guarantee you and promise you that it's just my husband. And if that were to change, we would do the right thing and operate that at the appropriate zoning. If we have to move to an industrial or commercial zoning, whatever it may be, I'm not too familiar with the different types of zoning, we would do that. And I ask that you, you do approve this permit because it means a lot to my whole family. We, we have two daughters and we depend on this business. So if you can just consider that, and that's, that's all I have to add.
Thank you. Commissioner Pinter?
I really appreciate that and thank you for providing the backstory. We have a lot of empathy for you and want to support you as a small business. What has us wrestling and thinking about this and why we've spent so much time on this case is this permit doesn't run with you and your business, this permit runs with the land. And that's where we have to wrestle because I think that, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but we believe in you, I believe in you. I believe and I want to see you successful and I want to see you set up for success. What we're wrestling with is granting land use that will run with the land. If you move to Kansas or you move to Thornton, this land use could run with the land. And so that's where we're really wrestling with the land use decisions. And you seem incredibly honorable and diligent and thoughtful and a generous neighbor as described by your neighbors. What we're concerned about is the land use that wouldn't run with somebody as honorable and generous and thoughtful as you. And so that's what I think the question is that we're wrestling with. And I, we're just, I think actively wrestling with how do we square this with the land use that we're looking to see in our historically agricultural land, which is disappearing across the community? So just, that's what we're wrestling with.
Thank you, if you could have a seat, I have questions for staff. Okay, the maximum number of vehicles here is stored, it would be three. If somebody were to sell the property and then all of a sudden now you've got a different owner who's only, now has three people they want to have come in and going with those vehicles, could we modify that one condition, number three? For the maximum number of vehicles can be stored on the property shall be three with only being one used at a time by the actual owner? Or would that be too difficult? The reason I'm saying that is because I'm sensitive to what Emma Pinter was saying is that if this gets sold to the next, they're going to, you may have somebody come in with three tractor trailers and they're back to running the business like the commercial business that we were worried about last week. Jen, I see you about to speak.
Sure, and, and maybe Christie can also jump in as well. But home occupations with commercial vehicles is not permitted. So this would just be the storage of the vehicles and this should not be, this cannot permit the home occupation associated with these vehicles. This is just the storage.
Okay, thank for the clarification. Can you help us further clarify that, Christie, about how we do home-based businesses?
Right, so we have specific home occupation requirements. One of those requirements is that they can't have vehicles over this amount of weight in conjunction with a home occupation. So in this case, the applicant has stated that they don't run the, the business out of this property. This, they, the vehicles are used to be stored here. And then her husband goes to Fort Leptin, which I'm sure she can explain more, goes to Fort Leptin to pick up the tickets for the day. So this is really just his place to store his truck when he goes home for the day. They are not doing any kind of business, employees are not coming to that location. That would not be permitted with this permit.
So somebody else coming in later and trying to do what I was worried about with the three other trucks would not be permitted because it's a?
Correct. This is just for the storage of the vehicles.
We have a whole lot to talk about when we have the policy discussion coming up.
We sure do.
Okay, I can tell you this, the, the fact that, it, it still matters to me that the person who actually lives there is also the person who's storing the vehicle, meaning they're the one using it, whether you call it a home-based business or not. That is different to me than the case that we had recently. What's also different, and if I were to support this today, I need to make it very clear on the record today, at least for my own good, why this is distinguished from other cases like, like we had recently or from others in the future that I may want to distinguish, especially if those come up before we have any sort of policy updates. The fact that you have neighbors goes to the fact or the criterion that it's compatible with the surrounding commu- with the adjacent properties. To me, having some of those, that number of neighbors that feel like it is compatible does for me, allow me to feel like there is compatibility, whereas other situations may occur where the neighbors are not going to feel like it's compatible and therefore I may not have the same level of support for future cases. I think it's temporary in nature. I would be okay even with three years to give it a shot. If the, if it meant a yes and I could get the board to say yes to three year. I know that's a lot of, of investment for concrete and all the things for potential three-year commitment. But if, if the commitment is there to follow the rules, then, then that risk is reduced, so. But I think temporary nature is important here too. And then I did pay attention to what staff did with screening for the aesthetics as well as the environmental protection. So those are my reviews of some of the facts that I could see apply to this. I would love to hear from my colleagues of, or even from the applicant or staff about maybe three years or other concerns. Commissioner Henry?
I appreciate the, the three years and I understand where you're coming from, but it really, by the time they get it all set up and it going, it doesn't give it enough time to actually operate and have the neighbors and our staff to be able to really see how that operation would run. And I think five years for the kind of investment that they're making is even risky for them. So I, I wouldn't want to go any lower than five years.
Okay. And I'm okay with that, I kind of suspected that would be the pushback or the answer. Any other questions or comments? We have no one else in the audience that would like to speak, so we're back to the board for discussion and interaction. Again, based on this, I think I can support this because it's limited, but I am very, very concerned about the direction this is going and the other precedent it potentially going to set. Commissioner Pinter?
Yep, I'm happy to make a motion unless there's further discussion.
Go for it.
Okay, can we get the, the motion screen? Because I want to make sure I get the findings of fact and all the numbers right. Oh, that's good enough, thank you. I move to approve RCU 2022-45 of the conditional use permit with eight findings of fact, six conditions precedent, five conditions, and three notes to the applicant. Second.
All right, that passes unanimously. Good luck, please be good to your neighbors and follow the rules and we wish you the best of luck on your, on your project, okay? Thank you. With that, there's nothing else, we'll be adjourned.